It's 5 o'clock, town college meeting to order. We want to welcome everybody here. We have a large crowd tonight and it's for a good reason. Everybody here at the board, we're really happy about that. We'll start off tonight like we normally do with a prayer request list. We need to remember Ms. Melinda, Ms. Miranda's grandmother's in the hospital. Josh Dillard, continue to remember him. Ms. Neva Taylor. We want to remember our graduating seniors and our kids and teachers over summer break that school's about to let out. Are there any others that we need to remember? If there are no others, let's go to the Lord in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we want to come to you thanking you for another day that you've allowed us. Father, thanking you for all the many blessings we're granted here in Smith County. We're truly blessed and we just always want to be thankful for what we're given. Father, we know there are those that stay on our prayer request list week in and week out for Josh Dillard and Ms. Neva Taylor. We want to continue to remember them. For Melinda and Miranda's grandmother, Father, be with her. Be with all those, Father, that we know of that are not on this list. Just help bring them back to their health that be your will or whatever they may need, Father, be with them. Father, we want to especially remember our kids and our teachers as they're getting out for summer. And pray, Father, you keep them safe, help them back to another year. Father, for those that are graduating, we just want to pray that you will be with them because we know they're about to experience freedom probably that they haven't never had, Father. And we just want to pray, Father, that they'll remember that everything they do in life has a consequence, good or bad. And we just want to pray, Father, that they'll do the right things in their lives. Father, most of all tonight, we want to thank you for Jesus and it's in his name we offer this prayer. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start off tonight with our awards and recognitions. This is very important to the board and we definitely very happy with everybody that's here tonight. Ms. Heather Willmore will start us off with the Perfect Attendance Award.
One year of perfect attendance, that's pretty impressive. But all of the young people that we have on our list all have 13 years of perfect attendance. That's a very wonderful accomplishment. And credit goes both to the students and to the parents for making sure that those students get into school every day for 13 years. We'll begin with Gordonsville High School. Mr. Scotter? Oh. Mr. Scotter, will you remain standing please while we recognize your students?
Yes, ma'am.
And parents, will you please stand when I call your child's name? At Gordonsville High School, we have Danny and Davis with 13 years of perfect attendance. I need to stay up here. Just stand right here. Next is Ethan Price. And the last student at Gordonsville High School is Tina Williams.
Danny, did you get a great picture outside?
Yeah.
All right, at Smith County High School, Ms. Hicks, will you please stand and come join us up here, please? Also with 13 years of attendance, Emma Denton. Next student is John Neil Vance. Mr. Smith, do you want to say anything?
Well, you know, if, one thing we've tried to do, and I know we've tried to do it the correct way, and not that it's never been done that way, but that way it means something. It means a lot to be dedicated enough even as an employee to come in and not miss work. And, you know, it's hard not to have a sprained ankle playing sports or it's hard not to have knee surgery or it's hard not to have a headache, just not feel good, especially when you get five parent notes and we just write them off. I know I would exercise those, but they're better than I am. So I think it tells a lot about the character they have. They'll make great students and great employees in the future.
Next up, we have our eighth grade valedictorian and salutatorians. Ms. Spivey.
We are going to begin with Defeated Elementary. We're going alphabetically. And if the parents of these students and the principal will stand when their name is called. The valedictorian at Defeated Elementary is John Ross Ford. Right over there. Right, Mr. Eddie. The salutatorian at Defeated Elementary is Adam Kemp. The salutatorian is Cameron Spivey. At New Middleton Elementary, the valedictorian is Carson Pope. Let me say something about Carson too while he's finding his spot. I believe as an eighth grader, correct, he scored 27 on the ACT. Impressive, impressive. Congratulations. The salutatorian at New Middleton is Colby Adams. At Union Heights, the valedictorian is Caitlin Hooper. And the salutatorian is Jana Abarama. These are eighth grade valedictorians and salutatorians for the schools that identified a valedictorian-salutatorian. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Spivey.
They're like, shoo. They don't always have to make a speech.
Miss Annette had told them they were going to have to make a speech.
Next, we will move on to our 2016 Regional Math Competition finalist, Ms. Wyndham.
Okay, so we're going to honor the students from Smith County that placed at the top 10 in their respective subject areas, grade levels, from each school, 6th through 11th grade, or 12th grade, actually. So when they, when they come in, if their parents and their teachers, I'm going to honor their teachers as well because they worked very hard. So if their parents and their teachers would stand, I would appreciate it. We're going to start with 6th grade. There were 100 6th graders in the region that took this test. And Chloe Hart placed second out of 100. Her teacher is Ashley Smith. Placed in fifth out of 100 and from Gordonsville, whose teacher is Lindsay Foster, is Gage Seventh out of 100 was Dylan Richmond from New Middleton. Dylan's teacher is Cindy Hicks. And eighth out of 100, the second one from Union Heights, Ashley Smith, that's his teacher, In 7th grade, there were 96 students that took the regional 7th grade math test. And we again had a second place finisher in Seth Manor from Gordonsville High School. Seth is Ms. Brown from Smith County Middle School who has two math teachers because she plays two math classes. She is also included in the 8th grade math class. So she is Ms. Jones and Ms. Miller's student from Smith County High School, Ashley Long. And 10th out of 96, she's not here. She is from Defeated. Her teacher is Ms. Vaughn, and that was Becky Claywell. 8th grade, we have, and you guys have already seen him because he was a valedictorian, is Carson Pope. He placed first out of 102 students. Great job, Carson. His teacher is Ms. Campbell from New Middleton. We also have a second place finisher in 8th grade from Gordonsville High School. Her teacher is Ms. Petty, and this is Ally Bryant. And the 8th grade, 8th place finisher in 8th grade, his teacher is Ms. Amanda Vaughn, and this is Adam Kemp. Pretty amazing to have second place in all of those. But we didn't stop there. We went on and sent Kristen from high school. She's actually for Math 1, which is the equivalent for number one. She placed second, and her teacher is Mr. Gross. Kristen, what did you place last year?
Uh, second.
In 8th grade. And we also have one more from pre-calculus. This is Jasmine Abarama. She placed 11 out of 45 students in pre-calculus. Thanks, you guys, for the great.
Sure. Ms. Wyndham don't do as good a job at really boasting her program. She's too shy and withdrawn, I guess, in some ways, unlike me. Did you really listen to the numbers that our county, that your children and these teachers produce? It's amazing when you look at what we're doing. And when we started, the calls and the complaining that I got with this program, you know, I tell my son all the time, if you want to be successful, you got to do what nobody else wants to do. And I think, well, we only won two schools in the upcoming, using this particular math series.
Originally, but a lot more are signing on now.
Yeah, but when we started, we were kind of fine, you're correct.
We were, we were.
I think you're seeing the product. So congratulations to parents, principals, and teachers.
Good job, guys.
Now we will go to our SCHS HOSA group, 2015-16 BITZ campaign. Ms. Spivey.
This next group that I want to recognize, bring them in. They're going to have to help me talk about what they're doing. Ms. Gentry, come on in. This program was a year-long event. Girls, stand like. Kind of sideways so that the camera can see you. This was a year-long event that they participated in. The BITZ campaign, sponsored by the Monroe Carroll Junior Children's Hospital, the Allstate Foundation, the Ford Motor Company Fund, and the community service, and community services. BITZ stands for Be in the Zone, Turn Off Your Phone. And they did a year-long campaign of events and activities promoting basically not texting and driving. And the whole, anybody, well, let me see what you're talking about. But you tell them what y'all did.
So after we went to Vanderbilt, we like kick-started our program. We started with our homecoming parade, really. We put a red car in our homecoming parade to show people what we were going to start. And then we did an obstacle course at the school where we set up a bunch of injuries and stuff that people could go through to see what would happen if they were in like a really dangerous texting and driving accident. And then we just kept going throughout the year. We did a pledge banner at a basketball game. And then to really like end it all, we did a huge mock crash at the ACT Center for both of our schools. So we had LifeLock come in. We partnered with the funeral homes, the rescue team. I mean, it was a big to-do. We had everyone come in. So we just really want to thank everyone that helped us through that, the Board of Education, our administration, anyone that was a part of it. We just want to thank you guys so much.
Was this Tennessee, all Tennessee high schools?
Not all Tennessee high schools.
But it's open to middle.
Yeah, it was middle Tennessee.
So it was open to all middle Tennessee high schools. And they found out last week that they won second place, which is $5,000. So their program will be getting $5,000 as a result of the hard work. And we're talking about hours of planning. Just the crash alone was hours and hours of planning and communication with the appropriate personnel. So they did a fantastic job and we're extremely proud of them. And we have a plaque. The SCBOE is proud of your campaign to educate the community about distracted driving. The team members are Amy Gentry, advisor, Ciara Callender, Casey Edwards, Amy T. McKinney, Tower Miles, and Katie Winfrey. Congratulations, girls.
We want to thank everybody for coming. Everybody's free to go unless you just want to hang around. But we do need to clear the room just for a sec. Okay, do we have a motion on apparent request? Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Campbell. No discussion? We'll vote, all of the favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, we'll move on to our consent items. Do we have a motion on our consent items?
Make a motion on consent items.
Mr. Campbell, Mr. Yaman, any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll vote. All of the favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have our superintendent actions. Hope everybody's looked at those. And we'll move on to new business A. It's a policy amendment 6.313, discipline procedures for grades K-6, student code of conduct. Do we have a motion on new business A?
I make a motion on new business A.
Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Ewing, any discussion?
This was per principal request and discussed at the time. And they were all okay with it.
Well, it'll be, it'll be two after the, yeah.
This is just the first reading.
This'll be the first reading. Any more discussion? If not, we'll vote. All of the favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to new business B. This is a policy amendment 4.204, summer school, and this does utilize policy 1.600. Do we have a motion on new business B? Mr. Yaman, do we have a second?
A second.
Ms. Gattenbaum, any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll vote. All of the favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. To new business C. This is our fiscal year '17 federal consolidate application for IDEA, ESSA. This is our typical yearly thing that we do. We have a motion on new business C.
I make a motion on new business C.
Mr. Manning, do we have a second? Mr. Taylor, any discussion? This does involve money, so we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Move on to new business D. This is another school year, 2016-17 special education contract. Do we have a motion on new business D?
Make a motion on new business D.
Ms. Gattenbaum, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Taylor, any discussion? This is again our yearly contract. If there's no discussion, we'll roll call. Mr. Manning?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. New business E. This is a partnership agreement between LBJ and C Head Start and Smith County Board of Education. Do we have a motion on new business E?
I make a motion.
Mr. Ewing, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Campbell, any discussion?
Is this the second year, ma'am? Is this the second year of discussion?
We've been working this a long time.
Yeah. It's been a long season. Yeah, it's, it's.
This one does not involve money, does it?
It involves providing services like special needs students and.
Okay. Oh, I could roll call this one. If there's no discussion, we'll vote. All of the favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to new business F. This is the bit approval for workers' comp insurance, school year '16-17. Do we have a motion on new business F? Mr. Taylor, do we have a second?
A second.
Ms. Gattenbaum, any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll roll call. Mr. Manning?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. New business G. This is a bit approval for the CCTV system at Fort River School. Do we have a motion on new business G?
I make a motion on new business G.
Ms. Gattenbaum, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Ewing, any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll roll call. Mr. Manning?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. New business H. This is a bit approval for network switches. Do we have a motion on new business H? Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Campbell, any discussion? I'm sure this is Mr. Wilson's scan of your angle. If there's no discussion, we'll roll call. Mr. Manning?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. New business I. This is a bit approval for diesel fuel. Do we have a motion on new business I?
Make a motion on new business I.
Mr. Campbell, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Taylor, any discussion?
We take all of the stones.
Everything's in the new tanks now. Old ones are, okay. Any more discussion?
County cannon removed the old one. It was a eyesore. Cleaned it up for, for we give the tank, we could get a bid on it anyway.
Right.
We just let them take it. They thought they might have sapped it or something like it, so.
If there's no more discussion, we'll roll call. Mr. Manning?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. New business J. This is a special course request for ACT prep course. Do we have a motion on new business J?
I make a motion on new business J.
Ms. Gattenbaum, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Yaman, any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll vote. All of the favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to new business K. This is a new position request, CFO. Do we have a motion on new business K?
Go move.
Mr. Yaman, do we have a second? A second. Mr. Smith, any discussion?
Yeah, I talked about it. I just, I don't necessarily agree with it, but I think this is something we'll have to do, probably try to keep us out of trouble, you might want to say. I struggle with it. Talked very about it. I don't think it's only the school system that might be in a little trouble. It's like one of the county building too. I do commend Mr. Smith by setting up for a contract other than trying to hire a full-time person. I can agree with that. I don't know if y'all have looked at this or any talk to Mr. Smith about this, but I don't have much of a choice.
The state auditor's pretty much saying it's got to happen.
I would like to say too, for the record, that those of you that know Tamra, there's our auditor. She said in the office approximately two weeks before the state comptroller come in and told us that, you know, these are recommendations and it was saying these small school systems have struggled with it. Two weeks later, the state comptroller comes in and says to June in my office and says, "If you don't do this, we're going to lose federal funding June 30th." And I don't think that's fair, but I don't think we have much of a choice to put something in place or we're going to take a, I don't think it's right that they mandate, just like they did with our money, we had to put in a special account. But I don't say that we've got a choice when the state comptroller sits and tells us his position on it. And June has also talked with him in depth and I have a letter from our consultant that highly recommends that we put something in place and we try to do it in the most cost-efficient way that we could.
What it is, is it's internal control. And help me, Mr. Wilson, you cannot invoice money and.
You can't invoice and collect the money, you cannot have a receivals and collect the money. The same person can't do that.
You can't count your own money in the budget, Russell, even though.
Teach somebody from.
I don't know. Crisscross each department, but that won't work either. Why couldn't I count food service, food service can't, they won't let, and I don't understand why, but this boy of ours anyway, but it's got to be a central part. Any, we can, I can explain to you, Mr. Manning, we're going to use this position, we're going to satisfy that, but we're also going to use that to recoup some money and help get some CTE funding. We hold back off this. And Melinda's aware of this too. We think we've got a pretty good plan to use this person. We think we've got a pretty good plan to use this person to recoup some money in CTE too.
It's not in there because I just saw this Friday, I guess. But I'm not gonna be here forever as far as an employee. I'm cutting back next year, and I'm responsible for something called E-Rate, which you just approved, expenditure for next year. To put it in perspective, the applications that I file for E-Rate represents savings to the county of almost $400,000, okay? If submitted properly. So I need to have somebody with financial experience, and then that person also needs to go to some training. That's like two full days of training, just to know how to get an idea. So that's another thing that we've talked about. Without really burdening somebody else here in the office that doesn't have the time or financial ability, CFO is ideal.
I think we have a choice, 'cause I'm highlighted pretty heavy right here, and I was stinging when I was reading this, but thank you for your time to talk to me about it.
So how are we gonna go about hiring this person? I mean, is it something that, or?
Well, what we'd like to do, we have somebody within the office. We'd like to transfer into that position and then open that position back up as a plan, you know? So I'd like to just adopt the position, but they're ready to kill me, so I'm probably not gonna do that. I do think we can absorb some positions as people retire and so on. That's kind of what I've got, like a date that, you know, unfortunately, but as time we're trying to restructure and get more of a position.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. We'll go on to new business L. This is the approval of the FY '17 budget. Do we have a motion on new business L?
I make a motion.
Mr. En, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Campbell, any discussion? Mr. Smith, you probably.
I'd like to say that, I think, I hope, this is the first budget that we really excited by ourselves hands, other than help just for the law and consultant that we use from the regional office. We've put a lot of man-hours in it. We've gone from last county commission, the directorship agreement on money. And we hope that once we can operate within the money that's allotted to us, our goal is not to go into fund balance. I don't know if that's possible, but we're gonna really, we're doing a lot of things and saving a lot of money to, right now, I mean, just what's on top of our mind. We're realistically saving about $20,000 a month. We didn't hardly this month because of the month, but what'd you say, $12,000? But we're actually saving that over beyond the Senate logistics that'll be coming off. We got debt forgiveness coming off in about two years, so we got some neat things going on that we think hopefully we got, you know, some more money in the state. And we got some, Melinda's got some great plans for CTE. We've kind of figured out some things that, how funding works that they don't wanna tell us, and we hope that we can capitalize on that and get creative. So we'll see.
Appreciate all y'all's hard work on that too. I appreciate all the hard work y'all did on the budget. I know it's been a headache.
We've got a lot of planning, we've done it as a team, it's not many.
It's been a.
For sure, me, it's been several others working together.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. We'll move on to discussion A. And actually, I don't know that we don't need to move discussion A and B. Because Ms. Moore, this was really what she want brought up. Let's move on to, let's move to discussion C and give her a little more time to get here. And if she don't, we may bump those if it's okay with everyone. Let's move on to discussion C. It's the evaluation of the director's schools, and this is what we do yearly. We have the, everybody has their paper in with their, it was supposed to be in with this, it was through, okay. It was in with the board packet info. If everybody could just fill that out and get that back to me, that was easy enough. If you could just fill that out and get that back to me by June the 3rd, and you can email it, everybody got my email? If you wanna email it, send it to my house, drop it in my mailbox, whatever you wanna do. But we'll, I'll put something together and then we'll present it at the June meeting. That's our, just our standard that we do. Does anybody else have anything they wanna say about that? And that's kind of the standard thing that we do yearly. Okay, if not, I don't believe Ms. Moore's gonna make it. Let me just see if she's close. Do that and then come back to it? Let's do that right quick and then. Do we have a second?
A second.
Ms. Gattenbaum. We'll enter execution. I get everybody to clear out, please? The two principals need to say.